I have seven o'clock, so I would like to call the regular session of Finley City Council to order on June 16th, 2020. We'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
And Mr. Wobser?
Present.
Will now stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business, Mr. Russell emailed me a couple of weeks ago that he was not going to be at tonight's meeting. I will entertain a motion to excuse. Mr. Slough? Second, Mr. Hellman? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of excusing Mr. Russell, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Schindeldecker, do we have any add-ons or replacements or removals from tonight's agenda?
We do. I'll put the mask back on. It fogs up my glasses, so I can't see what I'm reading. We have four add-ons. Planning and zoning committee report regarding the vacation of 1020 Adams Street, a planning and zoning committee report regarding Madison Avenue parcel, a companion ordinance 2020-068 to vacate 1020 Adams Street, and companion ordinance 2020-069 to rezone 2253 and 251 Madison Avenue, and also a replacement resolution number 019-2020 regarding House Bill 481, that is grant money, a change from Senate Bill 310. It will change the references to 310 to House Bill 481.
Was that in the form of a motion?
I move that the -- okay.
Yes, all right. Second, Mr. Slough? Any discussion? All those in favor of the add-ons and replacements, say aye. Any opposed, nay. Tonight's agenda has been changed. We have no proclamations. We have no recognitions or retirements. We have three -- I'm sorry. What? Oh, I'm sorry. I will entertain a motion to accept the changes or the previous city council meeting minutes. Mr. Slough? Of the June 2nd, 2020?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer. It took me -- no, that was okay. I had a brainwave thing there for a second. Any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 regular session of city council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. That is accepted. Now to oral communications. We have three. Our first speaker is David Alvarado from Finley City Schools, and he'd like to talk about diversity, inclusion, and discrimination. David, you have four minutes, and when you're finished, please remain standing in case any of the council members have any questions for you.
Good evening. As stated, my name is David Alvarado. I am a Finley City School administrator as well as a member of the Cultural Humility and Health Equity delegation. And with the recent events going on in the world today, Finley City Schools felt that it was necessary to take a stance and make a statement with respect to diversity, inclusion, and discrimination. And actually, this statement is actually being read at this very moment by our incoming superintendent, Troy Roth, on his weekly YouTube broadcast, and it will be posted on the Finley City Schools website. At this time, I would like to share that statement with all of you. Discrimination has no place in our world, our nation, our community, or our school. As a school district, we believe that discrimination in any form is not acceptable, nor is remaining silent as a response to the current events facing our country. Silence by nature is a response that -- silence by nature is a response, and that is not a response we are comfortable making. When faced with challenging situations, we could choose to turn our heads, conduct a safe and private conversation, or we could choose to take a public stand by discussing, reflecting, learning, and growing, even if the dialogue becomes uncomfortable. Finley City Schools chooses to take a stand for equality. There are many racial and diversity issues facing our nation. As the leaders of the district, we believe that it is critical to take a stand to lead the Finley City School District in a manner that puts equality, diversity, and acceptance into the forefront of our minds, our hearts, and our actions. The Ohio School Boards Association issued a statement on those who have lost their lives to systemic racism over the years. We echo their statement of the need for change and the willingness to take appropriate steps towards such change. Part of the OSBA statement reads, "There is no place for racism and hatred in our society. Strong public schools are the great equalizer, and education provides the foundations to change perceptions and attitudes. We must go beyond words to implement meaningful solutions that eliminate racism, social injustice, and bias, and foster equity to provide the catalyst for sustained and systemic change." The Finley City School District is proud of the Trojan community. We define ourselves to be Trojan True, which is more than a slogan, hashtag, or a fun logo on the back of a t-shirt. Trojan True means that we respect all forms of discrimination, and we support a welcoming and equitable culture that values diversity in all forms. As we navigate the many challenges together, let us navigate them in a manner that we embrace as Trojan True. Trojan Country does not stop at the doors of our schools. We will all commit to living each day demonstrating the utmost respectful behavior, elevating Trojan Country to the highest possible level of excellence. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments to Mr. Alvarado? Hearing none? Oops, Bud?
I've been in the district for about 17 years, and I would say over those 17 years, yeah, I've been at the middle school, I've been at the high school. There have been situations, yes, that do arise.
If the school of the year considered, was it how a class might have experienced this, and those who are involved in that?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. More diversity training for students and cultural awareness, absolutely. Yep.
Marson, you're on.
Yep.
You're on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker this evening is Zachary Thomas. He'd also like to speak on the Cultural Humility and Health Equity delegation.
Good evening, members of city council. Thank you for having us here today. I offer my gratitude for your attention, and also gratitude to the members of the delegation who are here with us this evening. My purpose for speaking is twofold: to provide you with a very brief introduction to the work of the delegation, and to invite you to support and participate in its mission. The delegation is a collective of citizens, stakeholders, and local leaders committed to establishing a community of belonging in Finley and Hancock County. We strive for the attainment of true equity and empowerment of all residents. This is accomplished not only through belonging, but also acutely addressing health disparities that prohibit members of our community from achieving optimal health. Moreover, in 2018, we learned from the Hancock County Community Health Assessment that one in four people believe that diversity is not fully embraced. This fact compels us to do this work. The urgency is real and necessary. Initially, the delegation began in 2017 as a vehicle to diversify resources so that minority and isolated communities can appropriately receive and process information about social services. During this early work, we learned from Dr. Michael Flaherty that when we strive to serve the most vulnerable within our community, we actually better serve the entire public. And so, leaning into his counsel, the delegation began to collaborate with the Center for Civic Engagement, helping to infuse with each of the coalitions a mindset of cultural humility and equity as each addressed social determinants of health to improve the quality of life. Most recently, the delegation's work has gained even greater community momentum prompted by local, state, and national civil action, with an explicit expectation of establishing a community of belonging. As defined by John Powell of the Othering and Belonging Institute in University of California, belonging is a practice of respecting that includes the right to both co-create community structures and make demands of society. Belonging provides opportunity to participate in the design of social policies and practices. Belonging requires that well-being and humanity is paramount. This is a critical point to remember. If a community is to have economic success, it must be willing to embrace social diversity. An unwillingness to see the importance of diversity in its entirety will stifle economic growth. The delegation has dedicated its body of work to establishing a shared set of actionable values, offering tools to support the development of an equitable and belonging community, and employing intentional measures of success that demonstrate the validity of the work of the delegation. And so, on behalf of the delegation, I invite you to become curious and engage in this groundswell as we collectively work toward achieving the goals set forth. As a profound local community leader has most recently said, "The diversity in all of us is the richness of our society. May we humbly find a way to create a seat at the table where all belong." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Are there any questions or comments directed to him? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Our third speaker this evening is Amanda McClellan, and she would like to address council on racial bias in the city budget.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amanda McClellan, and I call Finley, Ohio my home. And I come here to you tonight with humility. I carry racial bias. I have a lot to learn about racial inequality. I can no longer sit silently and watch humans suffocated by the systemic racism of our history. I'm no longer willing to say we don't have a problem because it doesn't personally affect me. I'm standing here tonight, and I'm willing to recognize my bias, and I'm willing to unlearn and relearn and start to understand how to be a welcoming community. The word, the three words, "Black Lives Matter," does not mean they matter more. It means they matter. And I'm here to petition you as community leaders to join me with tangible actions to demonstrate that Finley, Ohio is part of the solution to create safe communities for all races to call home. Are we willing to get uncomfortable with personal, familial, neighborhood, and community bias, and relearn a new way to live? Today is the time to step up, speak out, and learn, to unlearn your history. Change starts at home. Are you willing to lead with courage? The 2019 census reports that Finley's white alone population is 88.9 percent. So why am I here? We don't have a racial problem. What that says is the racial bias is deep in the heart of this community. Our numbers are speaking loudly. Our community on paper does not welcome people of color. Harriet Tubman stated, "After I crossed the line of freedom, I was free. But there was no one to welcome me to the land of freedom. I was a stranger in a strange land." Finley has been the top U.S. micropolitan for many years. We have an opportunity to be leaders in recognizing our individual, neighborhood, and community bias. Together, we have a chance to seek equality and erase systemic racism. I will join you and help you to do the work, even if I'm uncomfortable. Council, members, community, will you focus forward and look towards change? Will you deeply dive into the city budget, work together with the citizens of Finley to make our community welcoming and safe for all? Are you willing, Mr. Staciak, to take your pen and make changes to redistribute funds, to move those tax dollars, and to say our police need to be trained as stewards of safety? We need to build programs that promote equality and teach about inequality and bring the community where we want to be. Mayor Muren, I read today in the paper, and I thank you for committing to join the group of peaceful protesters tomorrow, to pray for peace, justice, unity, and to end the violence. Your prayers are appreciated. But I'm also reminded of the words of former slave and orator Frederick Douglass, "I prayed for freedom for 20 years but received no answer until I prayed with my legs." Will you commit to examining the budget to welcome the Black community home? Thank you.
Questions or comments? That was well said. Thank you. Hearing none. Appreciate it. Okay. That concludes our oral communications. We'll now move on to petitions. I'm sorry, there's -- this is a city council meeting. There's no oral communication from the audience unless a written form is filled out yet. Well, it's -- it needed to be filled out prior to the meeting, so I'd be -- I'm sure -- okay, petitions.
An alley vacation request from Kim Hamilton to vacate the alley between Hurd Avenue East to the first north-south alley.
Questions or comments? This will be referred to city planning and planning and zoning. Written communications.
The downtown Finley Improvement District held a meeting on June 3rd, 2020 at the Sherman House for various items.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Revolving Loan Fund Board held a virtual meeting on June 10th, 2020 to review two RLF applications.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Mr. Wobser has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Wobser.
Matt, do you want to talk about these now, or you want to wait until later? So, looking at these real quick. First off, thank you to the RLF Board for working hard over these last couple of weeks to get all of these pushed through. I think it's great. The question I've got here is the loan for the place going into Divine. I don't see it listed here. There it is. Mod Craft?
Yes.
And we're looking at $35,000?
Correct.
And so that's obviously not the same type of loan that we've looked at for the rest of these, which are all 10 grand. Or is it from the same -- I mean, is it the same vein? What's going on here?
So, the loans of more than $10,000. We normally -- just a little history on the revolving loan fund. We have rarely done small loans like $10,000. So with a $10,000 loan, we came up with a -- because of its smaller size, there were less requirements for a faster application because of the smaller loan size. So loans over $10,000 go through our normal process, and they're required to have all the normal documentation that we normally ask for.
Okay. So the loans at 10 grand or less were not? Didn't need to have all the documentation?
Correct. It's as kind of an expedited application. We don't need as many tax returns. We don't need as many profit-loss statements, those kinds of things.
Okay. Which would make sense because of the higher value. Last question I've got. We're the Mod Craft. You're saying that this is a small microbrewery going into where Divine Wine is located now. Did the board have any issue with the fact that we're giving them $35,000? Last week, we gave their competition $10,000. So we're funding competing businesses? Do we have an issue with we may be undermining our other loan because we're bringing in competition against the other company?
No. That issue wasn't raised. I have a personal belief that having a couple establishments in the same area, you might visit both in the same night, so. But that issue -- maybe I'm just a go-getter. But that issue was not discussed at the meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hellman?
While you're up there, Matt, I had a similar question to Councilman Wobser. And I was wondering, since this is a larger amount, and again, we're not financing any fixed assets. This is a -- it's for working capital.
Working capital, correct.
So they can make payroll and things of that nature. Are there any personal guarantees on these notes that we send out since there's no fixed asset to go after if they go belly up like Fine Wines did, or not that they went belly up, but they're no longer there? Do we ask for a personal guarantee?
We do. And there are for Mod Craft, there's three owners, and all three owners sign the personal guarantee.
Okay. That gives me a little more comfort. And one other last thing. Have they -- these owners been in business before?
Mod Craft?
Yes. I guess I was going to ask about all three of them, but start with Mod Craft.
The two $10,000 loans, they are existing businesses. And one of the categories for the $10,000 Catalyst Loan is they had to be incorporated as of January 1st, 2019. That's for the Catalyst Loan. For the standard revolving loan fund, that's not a caveat in terms of -- I don't believe that they have been in business as a craft brewery. I will say that, you know, we do have a board of, you know, I think really great people that ask lots of really good questions, lots of, you know, we have lawyers, businesspeople, accountants, and, you know, they do look at this, and they do ask a lot of good questions. And I really do trust their judgment, you know, that we met with that individual loan applicant for -- we asked them questions for probably 30, 40 minutes, and it really went through their whole business plan and everything. So, you know, they have to get through that process to get approved.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better. And I know Beth is on that committee. I think the mayor is on that committee. I'm assuming that they confer when -- oh, I thought you were. The auditor.
The auditors.
Beth are both on the committee, yes.
Any other questions? Matt, do you have a comment?
Just per our usual, when we have a revolving loan fund, grant or loan, I do request that we waive the three readings and pass on an emergency basis. In that way, we can move forward. And Auditor's Office has been great, teaching us how we can expedite the process. So these companies will have the checks in their hand Friday. So I do request for those three pieces of legislation, waive the three readings and emergency process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Reports of municipal officers and municipal departments.
City income tax monthly collections report for May 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Finley Municipal Court Activities Report for May 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed. Report to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Muren regarding Blanter Valley Port Authority Appointment.
This does require a council confirmation.
Mr. Wobser?
Mr. Hellman? A motion to approve Mr. Sears?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Slough? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Sears' appointment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Summary financial reports as of May 31st, 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Finley Police Department Activities Report for May 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Finley Fire Department Activities Report for May 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
A letter from City Auditor Jim Staciak regarding city's rainy day reserve account. He has asked that this be read.
Mr. Wobser?
I'd like to make a motion that this letter be read into the record, please.
Second, Mr. Palmer? All those in favor of this letter being read into, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Letter will be read.
During the budget and pre-budget meetings, I mentioned it is time to consider increasing the city's rainy day reserve account to an amount closer to Ohio's statutory limit. Historically, it is funded to a level of $1 million and will be used in the event the operational revenues fall short of the total resources available under Ohio law for operations. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, I can think of no better time to do so than at this moment. Per the financial snapshot report provided in your current council packet, the account can be increased by an amount of approximately $500,000. There isn't a more strategic move that you can make to buffer the city's ability to pay operational costs and by creating time to react to a general fund reserve shortfall. Since the creation of the city's rainy day reserve account in 2009, the appropriated operations budget has increased 21%, and the account balance has remained fixed. The funding level of this account could be tied to the growth in the operations budget as part of an adopted policy ordinance. I would be willing to discuss this aspect with your appropriations committee. By copy of this letter, I've requested the Director of Law to prepare legislation for your meeting on June 16th appropriating monies to bolster the fund. From general fund to general rainy day reserve account, $500,000.
Mr. Hellman?
I have a question on this. Jim, and I don't know whether we want to do this now or later on, but a couple of things. One is you mentioned in here, I can think of no better time to do so than at this moment appropriating these monies. And if I remember correctly, it wasn't too long ago you were telling us not to spend money because of the coronavirus. Can you explain the conundrum that I find myself in?
Thank you for the opportunity to answer the question. For the benefit of the entire council, I've been advocating increasing the amount of the rainy day fund for probably three years now regularly, separate from moving money to capital for items that could be paid for out of the rainy day fund. The unique thing about moving and restricting the money for this particular account is it takes the money effectively off the books. You cannot use it for budgeting for any purposes other than should there be a shortfall in the revenues for operations in a given budget year. The unique thing about the ordinance this body passed in 2009 is it calls for you to do just what I'm asking you to do. It calls for you to continue to increase the amount in this restricted account. The original ordinance said try to keep it near 4%. I've requested in the language that the law director has provided to you in your packet tonight, take it to the full 5 that the state allows you. And think about this a moment. Your budget for the general fund is approximately $30 million. I'm saying you have $1 million for when revenues fall short. In just the last few weeks, we've talked about revenues falling between $5 and $6 million short. How far is a million going to get you? The point being, the more you're allowed to tuck away by statute and the more allowed to tuck away by statute, and the more you do, the more time you buy your administration to make the changes they need to make in a methodical manner so that you don't end up in the type of situation many of us remember in 2009, 10, and 11 while things were going downhill.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with the underlying premise at all. I think it would be great. It just seemed a little bit odd that we were doing it at a time when two weeks ago, we were being reminded not to spend money, but I accept your explanation.
Two separate issues, yes, thank you.
I got it, thank you.
Mr. Wobser.
Jim, just, I want to make sure I've got this right. So we put the money into the rainy day fund, and the only way that it can be used is if we start to run short of cash in a given year for operations.
Yes, and I'm glad you asked that because the year of the deratio, everyone considered that a rainy day. We were all worried. There was an attempt to utilize some of the money for some of the expenses of cleaning up the debris, the trees everywhere. It was very expensive to get through that. And it's kind of unfortunate it's named rainy day fund if you don't use it on a rainy day. You use it on the day or on the year that your budget revenues fall short. But that's all it can be used for by statute. And it's a very, very prudent move here. It can only help to bolster your financial position over the whole.
So in that case, it would be if, for instance, we, this year, we started out the year with what, about $8 million?
13 million.
13, excuse me. 13 million dollars. And if we blow through that 13, and we end up with essentially zero working dollars, we could then tap into the current million or the million and a half, depending where we do with this. So that's when this would come into play. So really, even though we're taking it out of the general fund, we still have the ability to use it when we're in dire straits.
And that is the point, yes. That's exactly how it works.
Okay.
Mr. Hellman.
You mentioned in here, Mr. Stajak, that you'd be willing to discuss this aspect in appropriations committee meeting?
Absolutely, willing to talk to you folks anywhere, anytime, as much as possible.
Or committee the whole meeting, whatever. We always appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and learn from you. And I think I would-
It goes both ways.
Thank you. I would like to have a appropriations committee look at this, or committee the whole, whatever the group decides.
Mr. Wobser.
I agree, Dennis. We'll, when we get down to new business, we'll decide if we want to call appropriations or council the whole to discuss this.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
I'll just go ahead, and since we're discussing it now, I was just gonna say I'm in support of this. You know, as many of us do with our personal budgets, it's good to set aside an emergency fund. Right now, we're very fortunate that we have a strong general fund revenue balance. Setting this side, setting these funds aside is prudent to do, further protects us down the road. Certainly, we don't anticipate needing to get anywhere close to tapping into these funds at this point. So I'm perfectly supportive of the auditor's recommendation of continuing to kind of safeguard these funds for a future rainy day, as it were.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, letter to be filed?
A letter from Deputy City Auditor Ginger Sampson Regarding Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
A letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Cordanyer Regarding City of Finley Revolving Loan Fund Request for Appropriation for Sticks Restaurant LLC.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
A letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Cordanyer Regarding, yeah, Regarding City of Finley Revolving Loan Fund Request for Appropriation for Signed by Josette LLC.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
Treasurer's Reconciliation Report for May 31st, 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed?
A letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Cordanyer Regarding City of Finley Revolving Loan Fund Request for Appropriation for ModeCraft LLC.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
A letter from Safety Director Paul Schmelzer Regarding Federal Aviation Administration Fiscal Year 2020 Taxiway Alpha Rehabilitation Project.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed?
A letter from Safety Director Paul Schmelzer Regarding City of Finley Airport Auxiliary Building Lease.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed? Committee reports.
The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom was referred a request from Eric Bibler to vacate the alley between Lot 13081 in the Whitney Edition and Lot 8 in the High Edition from Adams Street to the alley north. We recommend denial of the request to vacate and suggest that they resubmit the request once the property is cleaned up.
Mr. Slough.
I have a note for Dr. Committee Report.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay. Or I'm sorry, just aye, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Committee report is-
It's add-on, planning and zoning, yeah, sorry.
Just FYI, the P and Z reports are add-ons tonight.
Planning and zoning committee, to whom was referred a request from Eric Emery Tuckerman Development LLC on behalf of BDA Properties to rezone 253, 251, and 0 Madison Avenue. We recommend approval of the rezone as requested.
Mr. Slough.
I have a note for Dr. Committee Report.
Second, Mr. Hellman, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Committee report is passed. Legislation.
Two P and Z's.
It's just part of it, sorry.
No, it was just a report.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor.
I have a quick question. I don't know if we need to reconsider later. However, I'd like to address one of the committee reports that was just discussed. Can I do so?
Yep, that's fine.
So I realize that the alley vacation request that was recommended by City Planning Commission was then subsequently denied by City Planning Commission because they had concerns, and I believe it was the first report that was before you, was denied due to concerns of the property needing to be cleaned up. And typically, I would agree with that. However, there are currently no outstanding complaints against the property. So if someone had complained and said this is an issue and it needs to be addressed, then typically, we would not allow them to even file the report until they had that complaint addressed. Given that it has not been reported previously, and we just kind of, in my opinion, sprung it on the property owner, I would like to request that council reconsider that committee report.
Mr. Wobser.
Mayor, thank you.
I was gonna say, and just to further, because I know many of you were not a part of that meeting or the City Planning Commission, the reason the individual is asking the alley to be vacated is so that he can reconstruct a new garage, then to subsequently be able to store some of the items that are currently stored on the street, which is one of the primary concerns of the committee.
I guess, the question, and Mayor, thank you for bringing this up for reconsideration. It got past me before I had a chance to ask, because I had the exact same question. I guess if anybody else that's on that committee would like to speak to what the conversation was around this and why we decided to deny this, it seems to me that this is kind of a slam dunk, and I don't ever remember, having been on planning and zoning, that we've ever denied somebody because they had stuff in the front yard. Can anybody speak to that, please?
One moment, Mr. Niemeyer has his hand up and trying to change his question. Mr. Niemeyer.
There were complaints a couple of years ago, and that's back when Mrs. Greenow was going out to see him. Might have been maybe two years ago, but the property is back in the condition pretty much as it was then.
Okay, Mr. Slough.
I guess, I was not aware of that, Mr. Niemeyer, but thank you for sharing that. When it was presented to us, the way I looked at it is he's asking something of the city, and for him to do what he wants to do. I'm just afraid, and maybe I'm reading too much into it, is that he's not going to take the responsibility to clean that property up. And if he wants that building bad enough, and he wants to put that garage up, then what would preclude him from taking care of the property? Something so simple, and all he has to do is clean that property up. If the city or if this committee wants to change, that's one thing. But why do we want to reward somebody that doesn't keep his property up the way it is now, or the way it should be?
Mr. Hellman.
I guess I respect the mayor's opinion on this. I go out and look at all of these requests, and was sort of dumbfounded when I saw this with the stuff, his belongings, not only stored in the front yard, but they're also stored in a vehicle that I don't think is able to be driven down the road. And that's in the right-of-way. And I'm surprised that we don't have continuous complaints on it. If need be, I'll file a complaint, because I think it makes the city look bad. It begins to deteriorate the neighborhood. If people want to reconsider it, I mean, I thought we were very courteous in just saying, clean up the property, and we will reconsider it. And if we're gonna reconsider it, I guess I would suggest that maybe some of the other council members would like to go out and take a look at it. I wouldn't want to live next door to it. Maybe others would, but it doesn't seem to me to be an asset to the neighborhood. Just my opinion.
As I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, another issue had to do with the alley on the east side of the property, as to how that would be, who would get, what part, would that be divided down the middle between the adjoining property owner or not. I don't, if he wants to replace the garage, I got the impression he wanted to put the garage where that camper or whatever is currently located. There's an issue with the alley vacation, too, if that's the case. I'm not in favor of reconsider it, to be honest about it.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Well, and we're just talking the alley, the length of his property, right? Because there's over a dozen apartments back there and-
Correct, yes. It is only the length of his property, and this would be a standard vacation, therefore, it'd be split between the two adjoining property owners. So his neighbor did sign off on the vacation, as is required. And again, I would agree that if there was an open complaint, that it would be our standard process, that it would need to be addressed before the application could even be filed. However, there were no formal complaints in our system. That's why it went forward. And it's my understanding that the property's owner desire is to be able to construct a new garage, but given the size of his property and the previous location, that he will not be able to do so as he desires until he has the vacation because of the zoning requirements and the setbacks that are required of him.
Mr. Wobser.
I appreciate what the rest of the committee members are saying, and I would probably tend to agree. My concern is, how does the citizen get himself out of this? Is it, since there's not been a complaint filed, it hasn't come under need, so there's no standard for what cleanup is. So at this point, he's been told no until he cleans it up. Well, your standard of cleanup, my standard of cleanup are all gonna be different. So my concern is that, yes, we want this done, but how do we do that to be fair to him and anybody else that comes in front of us with a similar type situation? What's clean, what isn't? You know, this goes back to the same grass issue. What's tall grass, what isn't tall grass? I'm afraid that we're getting ourselves into a potential problem here.
Ms. Mayor.
And in that same vein, I would just say that, you know, our desire, I guess I will speak for myself, I will not speak for you. I think, you know, my desire is that we allow people to use the property to the best of their abilities. This is a situation where he's able to address a concern that we all have with making sure that folks are able to maintain their properties appropriately and contain items that may be a bit of a sore spot. And I think he would be able to do this by this reasonable request.
Just a real quick point of order on this, that even though the committee report is passed showing that there is a denial from the P and Z, right, that there is an ordinance that has been created, and that will be given three readings, so when that comes to a vote, then each member can then express their desire based on the ordinance and not the committee report. Okay, any other questions? Mr. Haas.
Okay, we don't have any complaints or reports on it, but are there violations on the property?
Currently, in my understanding, and Matt may be able to speak a little bit better, I believe there's a vehicle and a RV or trailer parked in front of the house within kind of the right-of-way area. Again, items that would typically be stored in a garage. He does not currently have a garage, because he had to tear it down, because it was in poor condition.
I was gonna say, if we went down there and basically told him he has to do this and that to get this ordinance passed, that's what I would do.
I can only guess that he would probably have to pay to have them towed and stored while he then submitted the request, constructed, I can't speak tonight, constructed a garage, and then was able to move them into the garage. That would be my guess.
Any other questions? Mr. Hellman.
I don't want to belabor this, but if you go that route, is there then a time element that would be put on this? You know, that he gets it cleaned up in three months, or he gets it cleaned up before he, or that he has to build a garage before winter sets in, or this could go on for years, as you know?
Yes, yes. So, may I address the question? Perfect, thank you. So, yes, there is a process. I do not know the specific timelines off the top of my head, but yes, they can in many cases, because of the process, go on for quite a while. I believe that the initial cleanup period is 30 days, that they have to address it within. And then, after that, then we send, you know, second, third notice, and then either civil or criminal action is taken against them.
Mr. Shundeldecker.
I believe the intent of the committee was, yes, this will go through three readings, that's at least six weeks, and we'd just like to see some process, some progress in the meantime. As I understand it, there are a number of tires at the back of this project, of this property. Perhaps without, he can't build the garage until he gets the approval, but the tires could be at least stored efficiently and not just strewn about the back of the property. And if that was the case, by the time this would come up for a third reading, we would approve it.
Ms. Mayor.
I think the zoning department would be happy to work and share your concerns with the individual. And in that vein, I would request that the legislation move forward so we can address them and handle them.
Okay, thank you. Legislation.
First reading for Resolution 18, 2020. A resolution adopting a five-year capital improvement plan policy, a minimum reserve balance policy, and a rainy day reserve account as promulgated by the city auditor's office, and repealing all resolutions and or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
First reading for Resolution 19, 2020. A resolution authorizing the city auditor of the City of Finley, Ohio to apply for and utilize the CARES Act fund dollars on eligible expenditures specified in Section 5001 of the CARES Act in pursuant to House Bill 481 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
Third reading for Ordinance 202051. An ordinance authorizing the service director of the City of Finley, Ohio-
It was an ad, oh, I'm sorry, never mind, go ahead.
It was a replacement.
Yep.
An ordinance authorizing the service director of the City of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a lease agreement or agreements to farm approximately 181 acres in the vicinity of the airport, approximately 64 acres in the vicinity of the reservoirs, and approximately 23 acres at the Carlin Street location, all owned by the City of Finley and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warnke. Second, Mr. Greenow, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell, oh, sorry, Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2020-54, and somehow I've gotten out of order here. I apologize.
I wanted to do this all correctly. So, you know, I set the example.
I can't seem to find it right now.
What's that?
Yeah.
See?
Shoot, I saved the day. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wolfson.
I'd like to make a motion that this legislation be tabled.
Mr. Schindeldecker, second? All those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser.
The ordinance is tabled.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Hellman, there's no discussion on a table motion, sorry.
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas.
Mr. Haas.
The ordinance is tabled.
Really?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Hellman, there's no discussion on a table motion, sorry. Really? Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman.
Mr. Hellman.
Really? I was going to ask why we did that, but why the request was made, but go ahead.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Really?
Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer.
I was going to ask why we did that, but why the request was made, but go ahead.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker.
We'll talk about it in the business. We'll talk about it in the business.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough.
Yeah.
All right.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right.
Third reading for Ordinance 2020-55. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Third reading for Ordinance 2020-55.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. That was the third reading. That was the third reading.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Third reading. Third reading.
Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer.
I have moved for adoption of Ordinance 2020-055. I have moved for adoption of Ordinance 2020-055.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Second, Mr. Slough. Second, Mr. Slough.
Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki.
Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or questions?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser.
Hearing none. Hearing none.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed,
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas.
nay. nay.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman. Mr. Hellman.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki. Ms. Warnicki.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser. Mr. Wolfser.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas.
Aye. 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 Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. The ordinance is adopted. The ordinance is adopted. The ordinance is adopted. The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2020-056. Third reading for Ordinance 2020-056. Third reading for Ordinance 2020-068. Third reading for Ordinance 2020-056. Third reading for Ordinance 2020-056. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow. Mr. Greenow.
I have moved for adoption of Ordinance 2020-056. 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 I have moved for adoption of Ordinance 2020-056.
Second, Mr. Palmer. 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 Any discussion or questions? 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 Hearing none. Hearing none. Hearing none. Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay. 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 nay.
Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer. Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker. Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough. Mr. Slough.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2020-062. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2020-062.
Second, Mr. Hellman. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020-073, ordinance 2020-073.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2020-073.
Second, Mr. Palmer, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
And Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-074, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Director of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to execute the necessary grant application or applications to receive grant funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Aviation for the pavement rehabilitation project of the city's main ramp area and declaring it emergency.
Okay, I've got a question.
Uh, okay. Go ahead.
For, uh, Brian, is there a need to expedite this? Being that you're dealing with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Paul, we need to be done by the end of July. All right, we're still, we're thinking.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance 2020-075, an ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for leasing out the City of Findlay's Airport Auxiliary Building located at 1205 Lima Avenue, Findlay, Ohio, waiving formal advertising and bidding and declaring it emergency.
Old business. Hang on a second, Mr., okay, Ms. Mayor, we'll let you go first.
Well, I think one of the items where both were going to raise our hands to address, I would like to request that ordinance number 2020-070, the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant be reconsidered and, uh, the second and third reading be waived and adopted this evening so that we may apply for that grant.
Mr. Hellman.
So moved?
I don't think I can make a motion.
Do we need to, uh, do what that means formally?
A formal motion to, uh, suspend the rules. Well, you have to reconsider, I'm sorry, first have to reconsider. Is that your motion to reconsider?
I'm going back here looking for the ordinance number.
070.
Yeah, 070. Make a motion that we reconsider if the mayor's request, ordinance number 2020-070.
Second, Mr. Slough, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor reconsidering 070, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
So ordinance 2020-070 is back on the table. Do I hear a motion, Mr. Slough?
I had moved for adopt, or I moved the statutory rules of council be suspended and ordinance 2020-070 be given its second and third reading.
Mr. Greenow, second. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give ordinance 2020-070 its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020-070, ordinance 2020-070.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2020-070.
Second, Mr. Schindeldecker, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Uh, Ms. Mayor.
I swear, we're very organized, there's just a lot of things from the federal government that are not as organized. I would also request that, um, Resolution Number 019-2020 regarding the House Bill 481 also be reconsidered, waived and passed this evening again so we can submit for the CAREFAX funding.
Which one's that, Mayor?
Uh, the Resolution.
Resolution.
Uh, 019-2020, so that was the add-on or the, the replacement.
Yeah.
Originally Senate Bill 310, that is the funding that came through the CARES Act to the state, approximately $350 million that is being passed from the state to local municipalities that have less than 500,000 individuals. Obviously, we are considered in that pool. I believe I sent you all, um, a spreadsheet and some information that we've been kind of tracking that it has been passed by the House, should be signed by the governor any day now if it wasn't actually this afternoon, that would allow the City of Findlay to receive funding approximately $500,000 to be used. We're still seeking some clarification from Treasury on if we will be able to use those funds for direct replacement of, uh, towards payroll of safety services or if we can only use it for direct COVID-related expenses. So we'll see, certainly keep you posted, we may not be able to use a whole lot of it. Um, but Ginger in the Auditor's Office has been great to help us. Um, and as soon as we have your approval in this resolution, then we can submit to be in the state, um, system to be able then to then receive those dollars once they are released from the state.
Mr. Wobser.
I'd like to make the motion that council reconsider Resolution 019-2020.
Second, Mr. Greenow, all those in favor of re, or reconsidering or Resolution 19-02020, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
The motion is approved. It's back, Mr. Slough.
I have moved the statutory rules of council be suspended and Resolution Number 19-2020 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Wobser, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
And Mr. Slough.
Aye.
The rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give this resolution its second and third reading.
Resolution 19-2020, Resolution 19-2020.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 19-2020.
Second, Mr. Greenow, questions or discussion? Mr. Hellman.
Yes, um, Mayor Muren, do we know how much money this entails?
Um.
I've, I've looked at this and I don't pick it up.
Okay, so, um, it would be in the email that I sent out, our, our projected distribution is around $500,000. It is based off of, I believe, our 2018 local government fund distribution from the state. So it's about $500,000, the county as a whole will receive, like other townships, and the county will receive, I think, 2.4 million.
Our shares?
500,000, approximately, I think it's a little over that.
Mr. Stachak.
Mayor and I have been talking a lot about this and she's absolutely right, the complexities of the federal government side, this is like working with FEMA when we went through the flood issue in 2007. And it really, it's, it's, it's almost a, a large sum or a little sum, depending on if they allow us to use it as reimbursement for wages for our safety forces. So it's a lot of effort, a lot of energy, a lot of work has gone into this, both by Ginger in my office and the mayor's staff and the mayor herself. And we're hoping that we're able to get the large sum. I just want to be cautious that we don't have the expectation that we're going to get the whole $5,000. And I think you did a good job alluding to that, I just want to emphasize it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Other old business, Mr. Stachak.
It's okay, Mr. President, real quick, since I was mentioned earlier, I just wanted to say I was appreciative, uh, I respect and I'm very supportive of the passionate statements that were made earlier in the meeting by members of our community. It's, uh, it's something what's going on in the world. But I needed to talk to you, um, about a different issue that I brought up at the last meeting with regard to the water fund. I have spoken with both Councilman Wobser and Councilman Greenow and, uh, and, and it felt it was, I think, I think it's a consensus, it felt it was important to share a little bit with you folks and encourage you as strongly as I can to attend the next Water and Sewer Committee meeting. You saw the snapshot tonight in your council packet. I did several years ago and it's a lot more complex to keep up on it because of the way the fund works, but I do a snapshot for Water and Sewer Funds as needed for myself to make sure things are in order. We started this year with $5.6 million cash in the water fund. And, uh, recently, it's 2017, I mentioned, we had almost $10 million there. If we spend the entire capital plan this year, um, including what you've already adopted and what's remaining, you'll end the year with about $1.5 million in your water fund, which is not a lot of money. And I talked about that last month. And in preparing for a meeting, I projected that number out using the most recent update of the capital plan that, um, Brian was kind enough to, to get over to me on short notice and taking the book that you all received earlier in the year going through 2025, projecting those numbers out, um, assuming no increase in operational expenses, the number gets, uh, close to negative $7 million on your water fund. So it's a significant, uh, deficit as it's projected out today using the numbers, uh, if I've done the math correctly, utilizing the resources that I have at this moment. Um, that being said, uh, in order to encourage you all to get there, I'm going to make, uh, basically three, three, four-ish recommendations to that committee, uh, the night of that meeting. The first is, I, I, I am going to request or I'm requesting that we fully update the capital plan for the water fund prioritizing by what is mandated, what is critical and necessary and what is wanted and desired, um, based on what we actually know with regard to condition of those resources today. Uh, the second part of that is, um, I'm going to ask, and I know there are a lot of plans there, so I'm going to ask that we either open, that we openly review some of the plans or, or create as needed, uh, an emergency action plan with regard to some of the expressed concerns that I've heard over the last year or so by the superintendent of the plant. Uh, there's such as what exact steps would happen? Many years ago, AEP came within inches of punching a hole in your water line. What is the exact steps we would take if that's such critical infrastructure and we're saying that that's one of our top priorities to repair? Uh, let's make sure we all know that the money's there to make that repair if necessary and what the steps we would take so that we know how much that would cost. Uh, and with regard to anything else that we think would be critical to review those plans, uh, so that we know what we would do today if that would happen. The third thing would be to immediately review and de-appropriate an amount consistent with the, the average carry forward to immediately recapture, uh, the cash difference between the appropriated budget and the, uh, right now 2.8 million, but projected 1.5 million that we have, and make that same review with regard to the appropriated projects that we have on the books. Right now, there's about $1.4 million in, in unencumbered project money. So there may be money that we can pull back into that fund immediately to protect you so you're in a position, if we have an emergency, that we can move forward and, and get that taken care of with proper funds. So those are the recommendations I'm going to make, I'll be prepared to talk about them in detail. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions particularly by the committee. And I want to thank both Councilman, uh, Greenow and Councilman Wobser for, uh, the encouragement to come here and share that and try to encourage you all to attend that meeting.
Mr. Greenow, when is the next Water and Sewer Committee meeting?
Probably not going to be scheduled until the end of next month.
Thank you. Any other questions for Auditor Stachak?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Mr. Wobser.
I owed, uh, Councilman Hellman an answer on why we moved to table the piece of legislation and that was because of an email that was sent to me by Mr. Schmelzer. He was asking for some more time so that the scope could be finalized and that we would have a final number for that project. All right, thank you. Paul probably can.
Mr. Schmelzer.
Explain it better than I can.
Yeah, I, I'd add a little more color to that because I would like to know your opinion on the venue with which I discuss those results with you. So, uh, we, one of those options would be the Traffic Commission. Certainly, they discuss a lot of issues relative to right-of-way signalization and signage. Uh, this would certainly fall into that category. If you want to have more people, more of you attend the Traffic Commission meeting, you're certainly welcome to do so or you can call a separate meeting. Uh, the, the heart of the issue is really related to the extent of the repair that's going to be required. And quite honestly, the goal line keeps moving on me. Uh, I thought I had a relatively solid solution from the lane light vendor. I thought I had funding essentially taken care of for this repair, uh, from the, uh, retention amount from the project, the original contractor that installed it. Uh, since moving forward with those discussions, I've had a further email from the lane light supplier who has said, well, you know, to really do this right, you need to modify some of these installation requirements and, and put these different connectors in your lights, which also can result in the need to remove the base of the light. So I'm looking at the additional manpower that's going to be required to do that and the additional cost to do that. Uh, and I'd like the opportunity to discuss that with you all, uh, at the next council meeting or Traffic Commission so that we can all be on the same page with really what we're going to have invested in this solution. I think it's a great solution. Uh, my goal has been to get it to the point where, uh, we have a full five-year warranty on this product. Uh, there's a lot of finger pointing between the contractor that installed it and the lane light supplier with regard to installation. I want to get over that. Uh, at the same time, um, what I want is a product that we're not constantly going to be fiddling with and a product that the consumer or the, the pedestrian has confidence in. And although I think the failure rate, um, has been relatively low, I'm not sure that's the perception. So I just want an opportunity to lay that all out for you, uh, so we can have some consensus around the dollars. I, I don't think we're really talking about, uh, a lot of money one way or the other. That's not really the point. It's, at the end of the day, the product that we want to have installed for people that are crossing the street.
Mr. Wobser.
Paul, for clarification, folks that may not know, is this the mid-block crossings?
Correct.
Thank you. So we're just basically, we want to make sure we get this thing fixed right.
Correct.
For the third time. Second time, excuse me, I think we fixed it once before.
Well, it depends what you mean by fix.
By fix, right, well, it was never really fixed, right?
Right, we've had intermittent issues with it. Um, and I know you've been pretty vocal about the whole mid-block crossing thing. Personally, uh, I've looked at a lot of video, hours and hours and hours of video, and the failure rate on the devices has been relatively low.
Yep.
But if you ask a lot of people what they think about the failure rate, their perception is different. Uh, and what we want at the end of the day is something that functions as near to 100% of the time as it can and that people have confidence in and that they can also see is operating.
Yep.
Uh, so there are a lot of things that I'm still juggling with. I wish that, uh, you know, I had, uh, a direction that I could recommend to you tonight. I thought I would, uh, try to time it up so that I would have this, all, all this information by this reading, but I don't. So I'm requesting the tabling, uh, I'll get the information and then take it to Traffic Commission or another venue of your choosing for discussion.
Paul, I would like, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hellman.
I'm just going to ask, Paul, is there a need to have, um, vertical lights that also signal that there's pedestrian crossing rather than just the ones that are embedded in the pavement?
Mm-hmm.
And like put a vertical post or some sort with lights on it and maybe in there?
Right, um, I think to answer that question, I would need to know what you mean by need. Do we need to have that from an MUTCD perspective? From a transportation code perspective, we do, we do not need that. Uh, we do not need the lights that we have now. All we need are white stripes on the pavement. Now, what we're doing is going above and beyond what is required so that we have some other indicator to a motorist who's driving too fast or on their phone or has any other distractions that there's someone across the street. Um, the lane lights have been very, very effective because they're out of the normal field of vision where there are all other, all kinds of other distractions, whether they're, um, streetlights or flowers or signs from businesses. There is nothing down there where the pavement is and people are generally looking in that direction. So when they are working, they're very, very effective. Um, the problems that we are having with it is we're, we're having some electrical issues with it. And we think it has a combination, or it's a result of a combination of errors with regard to installation and also the connectors that are in the lights. What we could do as an alternative is we could take dollars and we could say, we, we don't have the confidence in this system long-term and we want to go to a similar system that we have, uh, at Main Cross. It's above grade, people push a button, they see the lights are working and they walk across. Uh, it's a very conventional system. Um, it's tried and true technology, for lack of a better way to put it, compared to what we're doing. Um, less maintenance, long-term, and it's, and it's really, uh, an opinion as to whether or not it's more effective than what we have in place in the road right now. Either is fine, a combination of the two is fine. Like I said, we do not need to do anything but paint white stripes on the road.
And I, I wasn't, uh, objecting to it.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure you, you understand that we don't need to do anything other than stripe.
I appreciate that. And the reason that I asked the question is if you are a third or fourth car back, you can't see the lights on the street. All you know is that everybody stopped in front of you.
Right.
So, that's all.
Mr. Wobser.
Paul, thanks for that information and we've discussed this for a long time and I think you're, you've always made the point, all we need is stripes on the line and we are, we've done what we're supposed to do by law. Uh, I think we all agreed that that wasn't quite, thus, uh, took care of the problem here. The, the, I think that would have been fine had we built Main Street the way that it was originally planned out, to have one lane both directions, uh, and reverse angle parking and, uh, traffic would have been going a hell of a lot slower and we would have had a lot of other modifications gone in line with that. Maybe we could have gotten away with it, uh, without having these lights, but I think these lights are very important. So I think the direction that we're going on this to get a final, get a solution that will work is the best way to go. So I appreciate the fact that we were tabling this.
Sure.
Mr. Schmelzer, can you inform council when the next Traffic Commission meeting is?
Yeah, it's like the second week of July. I can email you and give you the exact dates.
It's third Monday.
Third Monday of July. So if you're, at what time?
2:30.
2:30, if you're interested.
Discuss it there, but just put it there and anybody that wants to show up and participate gives some opinions. That'd be great.
Is that meeting over here?
Uh, since that's the conference room. A couple other old slash new items, I guess. Uh, I wanted to follow up and add a comment regarding O75, lease of the airport building. Um, a couple of points there. Number one, I'm still waiting on numbers for repairs for the HVAC system. Um, I do have one quote, uh, it's around $4,500. Um, waiting for one or two more, uh, to take a look at that. Uh, my concern was that we weren't going to go through all this hassle, uh, renting space for $4,500 a month and get it even up and repair this little building. Doesn't appear that's going to be the case. Uh, so I think we would be prudent from a purely financial perspective to go ahead and make this move. Uh, second, I also think it would be, um, beneficial to ODOT. Uh, they're in another space right now. Uh, we, we were originally considered for the office space for the I-75 project. Uh, the building wasn't big enough. So they were, they've been leasing space, uh, in a different office building. They're going to scale that back, uh, and look to locate here for a year, uh, if you were amenable to that. Uh, by the time your next meeting convenes, um, I would expect to have final numbers on the HVAC estimates for you and look for you to make a decision at that time because ODOT wants to know whether or not we want to lease the building or not. Uh, we do not have to competitively bid, uh, or take this lease out for auction because we're dealing with a public agent here. So if anyone asks that, uh, that's the reason why we're moving through this process.
Mr. Wobser. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, I was going to move on.
Oh, so Paul, on this one, just for the public, the, their, ODOT's willing to pay us $4,500 bucks a month for a year. So $49,000 that we would take in, we're looking at around 20 to repair.
Uh, on the high side, yeah.
On the high side.
Based on the quote that I got the other day, it was $4,500, so.
Okay, so your letter stated 20.
Correct.
Ballpark.
Right, that was a, that was a previous estimate that we had looked at.
Okay.
So you may be better off than I originally thought. Still waiting on some other numbers to compare, uh, look at those two scopes and be able to, to give you a good ballpark. Just to know that we're going to come out on the plus side for the effort.
After the year, if we do the repairs after the year, would we have any viable use for that?
Uh, it depends if anybody else wants to lease it or if you want to try to meet some bounds and sell it off.
Okay.
So that's why I figured we'd get it all done and paid for by somebody else.
Yep.
We, we still have an opportunity to do something functional with the building.
Okay, any other questions? If not, you can move on.
Um, I just wanted to echo, um, the fact that I'm proud to be in a county, in a city, where the types of discussions that we're having can be held in civil fashion. I think we're fortunate that we can all appreciate other people's ideas and comments. Uh, and I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our police department as well. Um, I'm so far from being able to be a police officer, it's not even funny. Uh, but I'm very, very fortunate that there are people that are willing to do that. There are bad people in this world and they wake up every day and go to work. A month ago, when COVID was going on, the expectation was that all these guys went to whoever needed help and helped them with just one of these. So I never heard a single complaint from any of our first responders. And I've never actually heard a complaint about, um, with a legitimate behavioral issue from one of our police department officers when it comes to diversity. So if you do, if you have residents who want to see something with regard to the budget, it's probably going to come to more our side of the table for discussion than the auditors. But, um, we're open for the discussion, but I, I just have to reiterate how proud I am to be represented and associated with our police department.
Amen.
Mr. Haas.
Just to add to that, uh, I don't think a lot of people realize all the training that goes into the police department. I mean, there's a ton of training and they take it seriously and, you know, that's the way they live. They take it and they use it.
Ms. Mayor.
I'll go ahead and just segue to my comments if that's all right with you all and certainly, um, echo Paul and Bud's comments. And, um, I'm currently working with the police department and my weekly column, as hopefully you guys have been reading in The Courier, will be focused around our police department and all of the things that we do. And we are very, very fortunate, one, um, that we have a wonderful police department that steps up and that we have very few issues with. And, you know, I was thinking yesterday, um, I think many of you know my father was an auxiliary police officer, so I grew up around Bud, uh, that might explain a little bit. That might explain a little bit. But, but that they, that what they put on the uniform, you know, when we think of police officers and soldiers, we think of police officers and soldiers, and that's how we describe them. We don't put any qualifiers around how they serve our communities. And I think that that's something really important for us to remember. But we do an extreme amount of, of training around diversity, implicit bias, and de-escalatious, de-escalation, crisis intervention, proper use of force, all of those things. And so we are very fortunate. We're going to be talking about it, but our CLEA certification, off the top of my head, less than 6% of the police forces in the state of Ohio are accredited through CLEA. That's an extremely scrutinized system, a standard that we hold ourselves accountable to, and that is by intention because we believe that we are here to serve the community and that we are held to a higher standard, and we are extremely proud of that. And our men and women in uniform here in Findlay, Ohio, hold themselves to an extremely high standard. And so I feel very confident that our percentages are extremely low, that we would have a situation as we see in other communities, not because, not just because of the administration or because what we do every day, but because they are a team and they hold each other accountable and they have the expectation. And that's the culture that we have created and that we expect. And so more to follow on that, but they do a wonderful job. Around diversity and inclusion, it is a very uncomfortable conversation. It's a very touchy conversation in many cases, but it's extremely important. And as I mentioned to you at the last council meeting, it's one that I believe is really important to have. And so this evening, a number of individuals from the community came and shared their perspective on it. I believe it's a dialogue that we continue to need to have because it's not about putting a rubber stamp or making a statement. It's about a culture and setting an expectation and setting an example. And so there are a lot of things we can do to make sure that our community is one where people feel welcome and included. That doesn't mean we have to agree. That doesn't mean we have to believe the same things or live the same way, but it's one where we recognize that we all have constitutional freedoms that we're allowed to have and that then we can all kind of go from there. So I just want to reiterate that, that we will continue to have conversations and determine how to best make sure that our community is setting the example on how we are a welcoming place. Couple of just other quick items. I think most things have been touched on. I was going to start with a joke about how I didn't realize how much hot air I had until I started wearing a mask. I'm sure you all feel the same way as I suffocate under this thing. I just wanted to also point out that hopefully you are all reviewing the income tax reports that I have been sending on a weekly basis. Andrew has been putting together those together and probably will from, for forever. I don't think he realized that that's now probably the deal because I'm a numbers person, so I want to see those weekly, not just monthly. So hopefully you guys are all reviewing them. He also actually sent out another report yet this afternoon. He had given me a heads up this morning that he felt there was going to be a significant adjustment today. And so as of about 2 o'clock today, we had an additional $150,000 come in in the last 24 hours. So it was a larger collection day, which is great. So we're right around, again, that negative 10% year-over-year, month-to-date compared to end of month in 2019. So again, not seeing a huge impact. That's primarily in the, completely in the individual and employer base, but our withholding still holds pretty, pretty firm. So that's great. We're keeping a close eye on that. As you guys look at those numbers, if there's other things you want to see, please let us know. We want this to be usable, actionable information for you. So if there's something else you need to see, please do not hesitate to ask questions or reach out to me or the auditor. We're happy to kind of walk through and provide better information off of that.
I guess really the only item, and then I'll let you all have a wonderful evening, is of course the census. So I won't even say much more than, please do it. Any questions heard?
Ms. Mayor, on the census, are they going to go door-to-door for those who've not been contacted in any other methods?
Yes. So obviously, the original timeline was that folks should be out right now, starting in April. They should have been out canvassing. The way it works is that they count houses by your address. So when we look at Hancock County, I believe the last number I saw is we have about 80% of addresses in Hancock County have completed the census. I believe they have adjusted the timeline. I have a call tomorrow. I think that they are, at this point, not going to be going out into the field until late July, and they will be canvassing from July through, I believe, September. And then they have pushed back where they don't have to have the final numbers into the Census Bureau and then until mid-October. But I was planning to send an update later this week to all of our townships and different villages in Hancock County to give them an update, just to remind folks to continue to post and promote that. But certainly important, but we have already surpassed our 2010 census response rate. So thank you for everything you guys have been doing to promote that. Certainly still very important, and I know has gotten lost a little bit in the shuffle over the last couple of months, but very important to do, do it online at my2020census.gov. Just takes a couple of minutes. You can also request it via mail, so you will get a hard copy form, or you can do it over the phone. And I do not know the phone number off the top of my head, but I'm sure if you Google it, you can find it easily or call my office at 419-424-7137, and we would be happy to get that for you.
We are still under old business, I'm sorry, but Mr. Hellman?
I just had a quick question. I should probably know the answer to this, but could you or Safety Director Schmelzer explain what the CLEA is? And I've read the term, and I should know, but I don't.
Yeah. So CLEA is just the accrediting body. They do the police or law enforcement accreditation for Canada, United States, and Mexico, so North America. They may even do it internationally, and Paul, feel free to jump in if you have more to add, but they are just the accrediting body. So just like hospitals, universities, other organizations are accredited. Law enforcement agencies can also go through that, so it's a very strenuous process. You have an application, you have pretty much an auditor come in. They review such things as, and it's very extensive, but such things as use of force, decision-making metrics, complaints. They did a, I think you were all invited, it was publicized, they did, you know, a meeting here where you could come and community members could share complaints or concerns. So it's a full kind of extensive process that our law enforcement, our police department maintains, and we were originally accredited, accredited in 2012.
Congratulations to you and Paul. Thank you.
Certainly. It's definitely the department, not us.
Any other old business? New business? Mr. Schindeldecker?
I think we all knew it was coming sooner or later, but regarding the letter concerning the support for the DORA project, do we have any information as to the dimensions? I was trying to, I was trying to put this under old business so you didn't have to get up again.
No worries. Get my steps in. May I address? Perfect. Okay, so the DORA, first of all, in case anybody's not aware, is pretty much a downtown entertainment district where folks can have open containers, and there's a number of restrictions around them. But this is something that has been looked at a number of times. I've been in communications with a number of downtown restaurateurs who have brought it up as an idea. Certainly, my message has been that we will be supportive to the extent that they need to show us that it's going to be beneficial to them and that they have the support from the other restaurants because it can be very operationally challenging. Looks like a great idea, but there's a number of restrictions that are, can be, can be a problem and actually end up being more costly to some of the restaurants. So at this point, there have been a couple of them discussing it, but they have not kind of gotten organized and enough support from the restaurants themselves where it's proven that they have wanted to bring that forward. My understanding is that it would, it would most likely follow the boundaries of the downtown Findlay Improvement District. So that way, if someone was eating at a restaurant and then walking over to a show at the Marathon Center for Performing Arts, they would have that flexibility. Again, that has just been discussions.
Okay.
And, and just in that same vein, I know a number of folks reached out about, you know, shutting different roads, for example Crawford Street, to provide more outdoor seating. Again, we spoke at length with our restaurants. A number of them, you know, said, "Well, we're able to set up the cafe seating in front of our restaurants. You would rather do that because then people can sit and enjoy a drink and hang out." Where if we shut down a road, again, it goes back to the liquor license requirements. We have to then have it blocked off. We then have to have a specific entity that is responsible for that if they're serving alcohol. If there's not an entity that has the liquor license for that area, then they can't have open containers. So at this point, our restaurants have said, "We've been flexible enough where they can have their own seating outdoors." They haven't pushed that, to have that happen.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Wobson?
Following our discussion on the RENI Day Fund, we need to set up either a Committee of the Whole or an Appropriations Committee to discuss this. I guess I need to know what council's pleasure would be, which would, they would rather have, Committee of the Whole or Appropriations?
I just-
Don't care?
How about all those in favor of a Committee of the Whole, raise your hands. All those in favor of it going to appropriation, raise your-
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, that's great. It's a tie.
Awesome. Well-
I, I, legislative, I can make the decision for, for the council, and I decide that it should be a Council of the Whole. I think it's an important subject that all council people should be aware of, and I think you guys just set a date and I'll be there.
So with that decision by the council president, thank you, looking at your calendars, I know we've got, well, what would have been vacation season coming up, but normally we would do those in between two council meetings, so potentially the 14th of July would be the next time that happens. Is there anybody that would not be able to attend that that would?
It's my birthday, so make it Thursday.
Okay. Jim, is that fast enough for you? That legislation, folks, would still get its second reading then on the 7th, but we'd still have plenty of time to discuss it before third reading.
I may not be around, but-
Okay.
What if you do it next week? My big Tuesday. Maybe Bud? Like I was thinking, the 20th?
Third?
I guess we have-
Or the 30th?
23rd or 30th.
How about June 3rd? What's that sound like, 30th? At what time? Mr. Wobson, do you have a suggested time?
Still not good, Bud?
No.
Till 7:00? Again? Well, we're good at picking out those dates, are you?
How about Wednesday, how about Wednesday the 1st? Bud, how about Wednesday the 1st? Wouldn't, Wednesday's when you don't work.
What about Tuesday the-
Yeah.
Tuesday the 23rd? Next Tuesday?
Well, there-
I'd say we do it at 11:15 because you don't need much.
What do you think of that, Jack?
23rd?
Yeah, I won't be there, but I don't have to take you around.
That's fine with me. 23rd, is that good for everybody?
6:23.
I'd say 5:00. Is that good? Third floor?
It would take more than that, right?
Do we want to do third floor or do we want to have it here? Council president, here?
Yeah.
Probably here.
Spread out, and if there's any guests.
All right. So that would be June 23 at 5:00 PM in council chambers for a Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss the RENI Day Fund legislation.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Hellman, second, Mr. Niemeyer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
5:00.
5:00.